이 로스앤젤레스 대도시의 유권자 여러분들을 돕기 위해 배경이나 직업에 관계없이 자원봉사에 임하고 있는 남녀들이 있습니다. 그들은 바로 특표소 요원들입니다. 그들은 선거 당일 유권자들을 위해 특표지를 배포하고 질문에 답하며 특표소를 개장하고 폐장합니다. 그들은 돈의 회사가 아니라 다른 사람을 돕는 마음으로 이러한 일을 마다하지 않습니다. 미국 사회의 중추적 분으로서 매우 훌륭한 일을 수행할 수 있는 이러한 특표소 요원 일에 여러분도 참여하십시오.
칼라포니아의 agriculture and environment are under attack by something which may appear harmless. But its damage is very real. The damage by invasive pests. Learn about stopping their attack at hungrypests.com because they're here and they're hungry.
You know, it's that time of year again to clear all that annoying dry brush from around your house. In the event of a fire, dry brush is extremely combustible and can explode. By clearing brush 200 feet from your home, you create a barrier lessening the likelihood of spreading a fire. I'll still be here when you get back. Get the message. Be prepared.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for November 5th, 2010. Welcome to the John F. R. O. Council chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And we also are out in the valley the first Friday of every other month in our Van Nuys City Council chambers. But by charter, we move, sorry, by charter, we meet three days a week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Our committees meet throughout the week as well, and all of our council and committee agendas are available online at our city's website at lacity.org. Also available in person through the city clerk's office and posted throughout city buildings. We are available a number of ways for your convenience to follow these council meetings. First, of course, live and in person, and we want to thank those members of the public who are here today in the council chambers. Secondly, we have two remote locations in which you can follow these council meetings live using our video conferencing. You can also testify from those locations, and those are the Van Nuys City Hall and San Pedro City Halls if that's closer to where you live and would like to avoid some traffic coming downtown. Also, you can use the Internet and watch these meetings live through the city's homepage at lacity.org. We have live streaming webcasts of these council meetings, but we also archive all of our past council meetings for your reference and convenience as well. We are available also through the city's council phone service, which is a number you can call, 213-621-CITY, and listen into the council meetings. And through those ways, you can keep abreast of your government, learn what's going on, and also online at lacity.org, you can get all the supporting materials for the items which we discuss. Those are made available for the public just as they are for council members as well for your convenience. Our agendas are made available 72 hours in advance for our regular meetings, and they're made available 24 hours in advance for our special meetings. And it sounds like we are ready to begin as we do on Fridays, our council meetings. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacant, Cárdenas, Han, Weeza, Coetz, Correa, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, West, and Zain, Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum as president.
We have three presentations today, beginning with Native American Heritage Month here in the city of Los Angeles, which the city council and the mayor are celebrating. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the Chair of Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee, who will be joined by the mayor, Mr. Tom LeBange, and welcome in those celebrants for this year's Native American Heritage Month. Mr. LeBange. All right, we're going to begin that shortly, but Mr. LeBange will lead us in that in just a moment. I think we are waiting the mayor, but we'll begin that presentation just momentarily. On Fridays, we mark notable occasions and dates, holidays, and other important occurrences here in the city of Los Angeles and individuals. But why don't we run through the agenda while we are waiting? Colleagues, if we can turn our agenda to the items today, first items, please, Mr. Clerk.
Is approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Westen moves and Mr. Smith seconds without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
As Han moves and Mr. Rosendahl seconds without objection, those will be approved as well. Let's run through the agenda.
First items on the agenda, items one and two are items which public hearings have been held.
Let's hold one until we have 12 for an ordinance, if nobody wishes to call two special.
I believe Mr. Alacant was going to call two special.
Okay, we'll call two special for Mr. Alacant, next items, please.
Items 3 through 10 are items which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes required for consideration, and there is a request to continue item five for two weeks to November 19th.
Without objection, we'll continue that item. We have a card on number six, and we'll close the public hearings on the others. Any specials, colleagues, 3 through 10? Mr. Reyes would like to continue number eight for one week as well, if there's no objection, we'll continue that for one week. That leaves us with 3, 4, 6, 7, 9, 10. We've called six special for a card, and if there's no other specials, let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved, and let's send seven forthwith. And with that, I'll recognize Mr. Tom LeBange for our first presentation, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of council. It's my honor to introduce the great mayor of the city of Los Angeles as we kick off Native American Heritage Month in the city of Los Angeles. Please welcome Mayor Antonio Villagosa.
Well, first of all, thank you, Tom, Councilman LeBange, for being here with us today. I don't have to tell you why it's so important in this city for all of us to celebrate the many and diverse people that make this city so great. And as you know, four times a year, we celebrate Latino Heritage Month, Native American Heritage Month, African-American Heritage Month, and Asian-American Heritage Month. And today, I want to thank you for allowing me to be here, for welcoming me into this chambers. I'd like to thank Vice Chairman Leroy Miranda from the Pala Band of Mission Injuns for leading us into the chambers along with the other bird singers today, let's give them a big hand. And of course, a big thanks to our sponsors, ABC7, our official media sponsors, the Walt Disney Company, our official music L.A. sponsors, Wells Fargo Foundation, and the Southern California Gas Company. Let's give them all a big hand. Such a pleasure to join you in launching this year's American Heritage, American Indian Heritage Month. All month long, we honor those who have made major contributions to our community and continue to be beacons of hope and inspiration to all of us. Today, we come together as one community to commemorate an important story about overcoming obstacles and achieving success. Now, we oftentimes talk about the pobladores who settled in this region. We talk about them as the founders of Los Angeles. And while it's true that they came here as they did, we had the Tongva, the Tataviam, and the Chumash people here long before those 44 settlers. They were and will always remain the first people of Los Angeles. It's an honor for me as mayor of Los Angeles to be standing here at City Hall where at one time stood the Tongva Village of Yungwa, which Council President Garcetti has often referred to. American Indian Heritage Month is not a history month celebrating the distant time. It's a celebration of a culture that continues to thrive here in the city of Los Angeles today. There are 220,000 people in Los Angeles who claim American Indian ancestry. In fact, we have the largest urban population of Native Americans anywhere in the United States of America. Our American Indian roots are deep and strong and thriving today. We have respect for and acknowledge those roots when we look at the issues that challenge us today. On healthcare, American Indians are the most at-risk minority group for health problems like diabetes. In the economy, a quarter of all American Indians are living in poverty. In housing, American Indians suffer for some of the worst housing conditions in the nation. November may be American Indian Heritage Month, but these are issues that our city must grapple with on a daily basis. Let the American Indian community in this great city remind us of the promises we have made on many crucial fronts. And it's a great pleasure today that I commend this year's honorees, the LAUSD Title VII Indian Education Program and Unite American Indian Involvement. They have been at the forefront of chronicling these issues, but also trying to do something about them. Their continued service and dedication to the American Indian community and to the entire city of Los Angeles keep the light shining on an incredible story of overcoming adversity with a spirit of hope, determination, and pride in our heritage. And I could tell you by the young people who are here with us today, who continue to nurture and develop and cultivate their traditions, their dance, their music, and their languages, it is an honor to be here with all of you as well. The future of the American Indian community here in Los Angeles, thank you so much.
Would you like to make the presentation, or should we hear from council members?
We should hear from council members first.
All right, well, let me just do that real quick then. Mr. Rosendahl is our first speaker from the council, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony Morales and family, it was good to be with you at University High School where the springs are, one of your original historic locations. I actually had the pleasure of putting my hands and part of my body into the spring to be blessed with the sacred water of that very sacred spot. Again, I want to thank you and your son right behind you for the festival presentation you put on, and I want to continue my pledge to be 100% with the Indian Nation, the first nation that populated the United States of America, and give you the respect and the support. I'm very happy that we were able to get at least 1,400 characters of human remains at Playa Vista at a cardboard boxes in a trailer and into the sacred ground. We still have a lot more work to do. So bless you all, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for leading us in this celebration of Indian Heritage Month, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Westen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and members. I just want to say to all of the people that are here today that a few years ago, when I went to Sacramento, that's when I had an opportunity to meet with a lot of the tribes. I've learned a lot, I was treated with such respect. I'm proud to say that I still have very, very dear friends from the Indian community. They even let me come down and impersonate a golfer, they're good, I'm not, but they're, we have good friends. So they tolerate me, don't laugh or anything like that. But I did want to say, years ago, they gave me, I think, is it called a dream catcher? And you hang it on your bed, and I lost it when I moved, so I need to get another one. But so I'm just kind of subtly laying that out. But what I wanted to do for real, we, each one of us has been given a gift that was made by a particular tribe. If the people could kind of raise their hands, the ones that gave each council member this gift, if you could, so that we could thank you properly for the gift that you, where are they? Way in the back, thank you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Alacant.
Yes, I too want to rise and congratulate all of you for recognizing your heritage. But interestingly, in a city of Los Angeles where so many communities can be hidden for so many years, I can't think of a community that has had reached that area where they were not recognized by the community more than the Native American community. And when we talk about going back to our roots, what greater roots do we have in Los Angeles than the Native American community? I'm very pleased to see so many representatives of Native American tribes from throughout California here today because so many of their members are residents of Los Angeles, and that's important for us to recognize. I also want to recognize my friend Rudy Ortega Jr., whose father passed away recently, and it really represents those Native Americans who have not received recognition from the federal government and yet want to latch on to their culture and hold it for generations to come and are fighting that battle continuously. We, you know, I wish you well with your continuous battle, you have our support, and to all of you, thank you so much for allowing us to recognize your tremendous history, and more importantly, we are looking forward to a tremendous future together as a united community.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm here to stand in support and passion for what we are celebrating today. And in the harbor area of Los Angeles, the Tongva people are the native people in the harbor area. And they were known for their superb knowledge of their environment, and that's what has been passed down generation to generation through storytelling and keeping the environment as a precious resource in California. They also sailed their dugout canoes on what is now the They also sailed their dugout canoes on what is now the Ken Malloy Harbor Regional Park, Lake Machado, in the harbor area. And recently, a nonprofit group called Keepers of Indigenous Ways, led by Jacob Gutierrez and a very good friend of mine, Carlos Prinzen, have approached me, and they want to restore in this regional park of Los Angeles, a Native American sort of a campground, where they will bring families and young people to this area for overnight teaching, for really telling the next generations of what is important, particularly in the harbor area. So I'm trying to work with them to create a memorandum of understanding between this Native American group, our Department of Recreation and Parks, so that our young people, the next generation, will have a great place outdoors in a beautiful area to learn the ways of our Native American ancestors. This program would include craft workshops, sweat lodges, and teaching of Native American problem-solving skills. I think this is a great idea for the harbor area. It would be one of its kind, and I envision people coming from far and wide, actually becoming maybe a tourist attraction in the harbor area, to see Native Americans in this beautiful environment of Harbor Regional Park, teaching the next generation about how important it is that we love our Mother Earth and that we take care of our Mother Earth. So congratulations all today. I'm so glad we're celebrating this month with you.
Thank you very much, council members, and let me add my good wishes as well here on this, this which is sacred ground, Yangna, here the original inhabitants. Before we gave the name Los Angeles to these lands, right here where the City Hall is, was part of that contiguous village. And the five-hundred to two-hundred people that were estimated to have lived here continue a tradition that's anywhere from nine-thousand to twelve-thousand years. When you think about how short, when we celebrate our two-hundred-and-thirtieth birthdays here, there has been a tradition here which is more than almost ten times that. And the traditions that we have here are very much in line with recognizing that we would not be here were it not for the very First Peoples. So many of us directly because of heritage, but even more than that because of what the representation of this land was. And we thank Mayor Vierigosa, all the representatives, and Mr. Labange for recognizing that history. It is integral to who we are, it is integral to who we have been, and it is integral to who we will be in the future. So congratulations, and here's to a good month to remember, not just now, but throughout the entire year, the contributions of the First Peoples of America and Los Angeles. Mr. Vierigosa.
Thank you. And before the mayor speaks, I think they're all wonderful remarks, Mr. Mayor, and as a Hollywood representative, one of the greatest films that I saw as a child was about Jim Thorpe, All-American, which is a story about a great Native American. He went to heaven from Los Angeles, if I recall in history. But in life, as he's stripped from his Olympic gold medals, he didn't give up. In nineteen thirty-two, in our Olympic Games, he sat in the stands and watched the athletes of the world compete. And later on, there's a classic scene in the movie, driving up Santa Fe Avenue, right near downtown here, a truck was Jim Thorpe, and the kids were playing, and as they were playing, their football went under the truck, and it popped, and all the kids were very sad. But the very next day, Jim Thorpe came back and said, "Here's your new football, and I want to be your coach." Jim Thorpe, the idea of Jim Thorpe, "Native people, you're our coaches. You were here first to take care of the land." And another value I have is what I've learned from Native people is to make a decision that lasts many generations. There's many great values that you have that we should share. And, Mr. Mayor, you're always there bringing all the people into City Hall, which is so important, but your teammate here, Cultural Affairs and Oldagai, help honor these days, along with our variety of community partners, including KABC, Wells Fargo, and Disney. So I just want to say, as chair of this committee, this is a great day of a great month. And as Ms. Hahn said so eloquently, to start off this month with this celebration, and these beautiful children, and the most colorful of all dress, I'm glad to be with you all this morning. Now, let's have a hand for Mayor Vierigosa.
If I can have the representatives of United American Indian Involvement, behalf of the City Council, the, my own office, Cultural Affairs, and very importantly, the entire city, we'd like to acknowledge you for the good work that you do. And if we can bring up the representatives of L.A. Unified District Title VII Indian Education Programs, which have been very, very important to ensuring that the school district not only does not discriminate, but promotes tolerance as well. Thank you, members.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate all of your presence here today, and thank you for joining with us to mark this month. We will next recognize Councilmember Jose Wezar from the Fourteenth Council District for our next presentation. While we're doing that, let's reconsider, we had cards on four and seven, so let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration. Okay, and eight, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
If we can take eight up, we do have cards on that, let's go ahead and, on consent, go ahead and please open the roll on eight. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Great, that's approved. And we'll go back to our presentations, and Mr. Wezar for our next presentation.
And I'm very honored to be standing here next to a distinguished gentleman that is a veteran of the Armed Forces for the United States of America, and someone who continues to play a very important role in continuing the support for veterans in East Los Angeles and throughout the region. Veterans Day is upon us, and it's an honor to be standing here next to someone who served his country, put his own life on the line, and continues to support others that were in similar situations as himself. And I know that although we express Veterans Day once a year, I often like to say that we should express Veterans Day each and every day here in the city of Los Angeles. And we should also remember that, just like Tony Zapata that we're honoring today, there are young men and women, and men and women of all races and all ages that are currently protecting this country throughout the world. Today, it's a distinct pleasure to honor Tony Zapata. You know, Tony Zapata was nominated as the 2010 Veteran of the Year by the Los Angeles County Department of Military and Veteran Affairs. The official recognition ceremony will be held this Saturday, November sixth, during the halftime ceremony at the Fourteenth Annual Veterans in Armed Forces Football Game at the Rose Bowl. That ceremony is designed to honor a veteran within Los Angeles County, whose lifetime accomplishments are in the highest traditions of those who served in combat. Tony is truly a special man who really cares about his family, his community, his fellow veterans, and most certainly, the country that he has been proud to serve. A little bit more about Tony Zapata. He is a commander, veteran of foreign wars post forty-nine, forty-six ninety-six. He was born in Del Rio, Texas. By nineteen sixty-five, he enlisted in the United States Navy and went aboard the USS Evans DE-ten twenty-three in Bremerton, Washington, where he worked as a machinist, mate, fireman, apprentice. In August of nineteen sixty-seven, he was assigned to North Island Naval Air Station in Coronado, California, where he worked as an aviation ordinance airman. Soon thereafter, Tony was trained in search and rescue operations in NHU-1 helicopters, and he was given orders and sent to Okinawa and joined a search and rescue unit with the Third Marine Division Temporary Attached Duty. From Okinawa, Tony went to Coovi Point in the Philippine Islands. It was there, at Coovi Point, that Tony qualified to operate a mounted M-60 machine gun. In January nineteen sixty-eight, Tony was then given orders and sent to Da Nang, South Vietnam, where he joined operations with a TET offensive. After serving one year in Vietnam, Tony was reassigned to North Island Naval Air Station, where he was honorably discharged in February of nineteen sixty-nine. In May of nineteen sixty-nine, Tony went to work for Travelers Insurance Company as a workers' compensation claims investigator. After his work with Travelers, Tony went to US Can in Commerce, California, as an inspector until he retired in two thousand and six. In nineteen ninety-two, Tony began his work with the Veterans of Foreign Affairs Wars, but it was after he retired that he dedicated himself full-time to the VFW. And in June of two thousand and ten, he was appointed commander to the VFW Post Forty-six Ninety-Six in East Los Angeles, and part of Tony's work with the VFW consists of working with third through fifth grade elementary students. He speaks to them about the importance of patriotism, about the essential meaning of national holidays such as Independence Day, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and the cost and price of freedom. He has also shown them how they can support our troops in Iraq and Afghanistan by writing letters, sending care packages to our servicemen and women overseas. And so with that, it is my distinct honor to not only recognize Tony for his recognition as the 2010 Los Angeles County Veteran of the Year, but also to say that the city of Los Angeles shares in that recognition, and to thank you for your service to this country, and to thank you for your service to our young people, where you continue to talk to them, mentor them, and show them what being an American is all about. Congratulations, Tony. Thank you.
Mr. Wezar, can I suggest you take up his visitor tag for the photo?
Sure, thank you very much.
Take that up. We'll relieve you of that, sir.
We'll do that, another photo.
All right, okay. Yes, and Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, I want to thank you. Before you speak, you and I were in the military at the same time, and I was stationed at Fort Carson, Colorado. And many know that, as a psychiatric social worker, I saw eight or nine Vietnam vets a day through that experience there. And now, the wars in Afghanistan and Iraq, our brothers, our comrades, and sisters that are there go back a second time and a third time, and in this age where they fly in, fly out, the post-traumatic stress syndrome issues are even more significant than they were during the Vietnam era. I never thought they could be worse than the Vietnam era in terms of how people had to deal with war and killing, and friends being killed, and themselves killing, and all of the horrific aspects of war. But today, it's even worse, because there's no general draft, so most people aren't impacted. And those that are impacted are dramatically impacted. So I just want to thank you for your leadership, for your constant vigilance and commitment to our men and women in service, and I want to salute you for all you've done for all of us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wezar, council members, Mr. President. I feel humbled, greatly blessed to be here amongst you today. As the councilman was saying, I served in the United States Navy, which I considered the greatest navy in the world, from nineteen sixty-five to sixty-nine. In nineteen sixty-seven and sixty-eight, I served in the Republic of Vietnam in a search and rescue squadron, temporary type duty, to the Third Marine Division in Da Nang as a helicopter aircrewman. Today, I'm veteran foreign wars commander post forty-six ninety-six in East Los Angeles, which I'm very proud of. I would like to thank Colonel Joseph N. Smith, United States Marine Corps Retired, for selecting me Veteran of the Year. But who I really want to thank for nominating me would be Chief Navy Petty Officer David Jimenez, and also Navy First Class Petty Officer Letizia Quezada for honoring me at the United States Navy Recruiting Command. Next week, as you know, is Thursday, November eleventh, Veterans Day. I would like to see a day of true recognition to honor our veterans. If you see a veteran at the mall, at a ballpark, or anywhere in public, stand up, America, cheer him or her on. Step forward, America, shake their hands and thank them for their service. Raise your voice, America, and honor them. Thank you very much, God bless you, and God bless America. We're also here with Tony's son, Billy, who has joined us for this ceremony, and, Mr. President, I know you are a reserve in the Navy as well, so you must share some camaraderie here with Tony, and thank you, Mr. President, and all of our council members who've served in the Armed Forces, and to all the veterans. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wezar. Congratulations again, and thank you for your presence here as well in all that you do. We appreciate you very much. With that, we will go to our general public comment for today. I'd like to ask Dr. Clyde Williams to come forward as our first speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, four-one-one-five Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Also, there's a Veterans Parade on Sunday, one P.M. on Eagle Rock Boulevard, so we would like to see everybody out. So, back to reality. The Board of Public Works has what is called the Low-Impact Development. They're trying to reduce the stormwater runoff. However, it also seems to be a kind of a bait and switch, or let's slip it by the public, because yesterday, there was a meeting, it was very well attended by lots of techie types, and very few people from the general public, because it wasn't notified to anybody in the neighborhood councils or other organizations, which might have some interest in stormwater. But one of the things it did do is show that they seem to not want to have the public, they only want stakeholders. Starbucks coffee was provided, so, hey, I went. The question comes back as to, they want to slip in stormwater requirements on single-family dwellings, so they only require two rain barrels. Well, it's ineffective. Two rain barrels doesn't do much in the way of collecting rainwater, when you consider that they need four hundred gallons of detention for a typical thousand-square-foot roof. So they did see that was necessary for all of those with four or more units, but not for those with less than four units. Why? Slip it by us again. Thank you.
Daniel Gus is our next speaker in Van Nuys. Good morning, Mr. Gus.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I wanted to bring City Council's attention to the fact that Los Angeles is going to lose a really important animal charity from Jan Perry's CD Nine in about a month. Downtown Dog Rescue has provided more than a thousand free spays and neuters, shots, microchips, and in some instances, jobs for homeless people. The company in CD Nine where Downtown Dog Rescue is based is moving to the city of Vernon in about a month and a half, and I've been in touch with Jan Perry's office, but I also wanted to make a plea today to those council members whose districts are in the eastern and southern parts of the city, namely Mr. Reyes, Mr. Parks, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Wezar. If you have an abandoned property that is creating blight in your district, and you would like a really incredible animal charity to stay in the city of Los Angeles... would like a really incredible animal charity to stay in the city of Los Angeles and offer amazing free services to your constituents, I'm hoping that you will call Lori Wise at Downtown Dog Rescue. I will give you her phone number, or anybody out in the audience. Hang on, I should have had this up there already, sorry about that. Or email Lori, L-O-R-I, at Modernica, M-O-D-E-R-N-I-C-A dot com, because they need a property or else they're going to have no place from which to operate. Lori's number at Downtown Dog Rescue, if you have some urban blighted property that you'd like to lease for a dollar a year, is two-one-three-four-four-eight-two-nine-two-seven. And I thank you very much, have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Gus. Appreciate your comments this morning. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that will be Richard Robinson.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Three things. In this week's downtown news, there's an article regarding the Metro's choice of the downtown connector, the route, that'll connect the gold line to the blue line. That's not really true, because if you follow the legislation, it actually connects the blue line to the blue line. Why the gold? What is hidden? Why would anybody have a discussion? Because I've heard numerous times that they're the same. Why would a discussion be necessary using the same in any kind of reference if you already had one construction authority? Never get an answer on that. There was an article yesterday also in the Daily Breeze you might have read about the California Highway Patrol dedicating an intersection, or part of the one-ten interstate, to a highway patrol officer who had been shot and killed back in the, I believe it was in the sixties. Turns out, somebody who spoke at the dedication ceremony, who said he was his nephew, wasn't actually a member of the family at all. And somebody from the Highway Patrol stated afterwards in the follow-up article that the process wasn't totally vetted. And that's my point here, because you've had processes here that have been vetted, so you say, but it's hard to believe from your actions. I refer to the AEG fiasco again, and the signage fiasco, that was vetted even though you had a meeting with the Public Works Department on a new advertising. It goes on and on and on, leading from behind.
Mr. Robinson is our next speaker.
Mr. President, members, homeless people are not the problem. The problem is homelessness. Sir, as the cold weather again approaches and the... Approximately forty years ago, I arrived here from the University of Michigan. Former mayor, Mr. Bradley was sitting around. I can't tell you the pride I have in individuals who dedicated their lives to working to protect As the cold weather approaches, you're going to have to give a tremendous amount of attention to the growing number of homeless people in downtown Los Angeles. Couple nights ago, I was sitting with a group of homeless people at Union Station. I woke up, and there was a homeless guy. He had his head in my lap. I can't tell you. I never met him before, but when I woke up, there's this homeless kid who felt so safe because I was there, that I'm asking you now, if you can give us help, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. That'll close our general public comment. If we go to items called special, saving number one for now, see if we get twelve members.
Item two was called special for Councilmember Alarcon.
Mr. Alarcon, item number two.
Can I ask Representative CDD to step forward? Members, the only reason I'm calling this item special is to inform you once again about the importance...
Come on to the table. To the table. Thank you.
Yeah. The importance of the Earned Income Tax Credit. Every Friday, or at least for the two months where we're meeting once a month, but we've been meeting with regard to our dollars, and sometimes we do not recognize the value of billions of dollars that have been allocated for the purposes of Earned Income Tax Credit. These are credits that will go to our constituents only if they apply. And the fact is that many, many of them are not applying. And so we wanted to make a little announcement that the IRS, at our request, is going to literally send letters to tens of thousands of people from Los Angeles who might have failed to qualify for this benefit, which could be as much as five thousand nine hundred dollars. And so I would like for CDD to explain to you what we are doing to try and ensure that senior citizens, people who are of lower income, and even people who didn't work at all, might be eligible for this Earned Income Tax Credit in every single one of our districts. And so if she could just explain how the program's going to work this year and what it is we will be doing in the very near future, in a couple of weeks, with regard to a press conference to announce this, if she could describe what we're doing to reach out to folks to qualify for the Earned Income Tax Credit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Lisa Salazar, Community Development Department. We've deferred to Program Manager Abby Marquez to talk about the EITC.
Good morning, councilmembers. CDD has been at the forefront of this issue since two thousand and two. In fact, we've worked with many councilmembers in previous years. Councilmember Garcetti has been one of our local champions of the Earned Income Tax Credit, as well as worked with many of you in your local districts to organize tax events or to promote the free tax preparation services. Councilmember Alarcon has been an incredible champion of this effort. The California EITC project that he's talking about is an initiative that is being spearheaded by the Internal Revenue Service. We've identified, or they have identified approximately twelve thousand households in Los Angeles County that did not apply for the Earned Income Tax Credit. So we're looking at ways to promote this credit within those households. We will be hosting a press conference, and the councilmember's office will be spearheading in the very near future, hopefully in the next week or so. And we are engaging our Family Source Centers and our Work Source Centers to help educate our city constituents, to give them copies of what the actual mailer will look like, and then to create, obviously, some collateral material that is relatable, that they can understand, so that they don't toss the mailer that they could potentially receive. So this year also, we had a very successful pilot program within the Family Source System. We were formally able to integrate the promotion of the Earned Income Tax Credit and free tax preparation services. Through our Family Source Centers, we were able to serve approximately two thousand families and provide free tax preparation services. As a campaign that includes the city and the county, we were able to serve over forty thousand taxpayers this year. So recently also, we did have a meeting at the request of Councilmember Alarcon, Corcoran, and Parks through the Jobs Committee meeting. We did have a meeting with city departments. We had a great turnout, we had approximately twenty departments attend, and they have been submitting commitment forms to us, expressing ways that they can support the campaign in the two thousand and eleven tax season. So we're very excited. We hope to continue to work with you, with all of you, next year, and then hopefully you'll be able to attend or participate in the upcoming press event.
Councilmembers, if I could just finish with this, that in a couple of weeks, we're going to be announcing that the IRS is actually going to be mailing out to these people who potentially qualify for this credit. This was modeled after a program in New York. One of my staff members, Sarah Brennan, who used to work for Mayor Bloomberg, was aware of it. And so we made the request to the IRS to do this. They are doing this all over California, but the bottom line is that this will provide badly-needed dollars into the hands of folks who need them the most, and those dollars will recycle in our economy several times, and that's good for all of us. So I want to invite all of you to the press conference as soon as we know when that's going to be. You will be getting advanced information about that press conference, but I want to make it clear that this is something that constituents in every single one of our districts qualify for, and we can get this money into the city of Los Angeles to boost our economy. And with your participation and with your information being disseminated in your council offices, we can do a much better job of getting our fair share of federal dollars.
If I can just add, it does translate to approximately thirty million dollars that was left unclaimed in Allen County alone this year.
Thank you, and thank you for your good work. With that, let's go ahead, and Ms. Hahn.
I just wanted to thank you for what you're doing, and I want to thank Richard for bringing this to our attention. Again, this is a service that is so important and so vital to so many people. And as you said, this is going to be money back into folks' households, into our economy. And I know in my district, in January, at the YMCA in Wilmington, there's going to be free tax help. So we're going to advertise that a little bit more. It's going to be January thirtieth, it's a Saturday, but it's in Wilmington, it's at the YMCA. So we're going to really make sure that everyone knows about that and takes advantage of this free tax help. Everybody can use help with their taxes, but this particularly, you're reaching a segment of our society that this is so important and will really benefit them. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on this item, and please tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Mr. Wesson, for President.
Would this be appropriate time to mention that we have a distinguished visitor with us today? We have Mayor Sung Choi from the city of Go-yang in the great country of Korea. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's an honor to have you here today. Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson, for that recognition, and we hope you enjoy your time here in Los Angeles. Thank you. With that, we'll go to our next item, I think number four is our...
Yes, item four called special for cards.
Arnold Sacks is our first speaker, and then Dr. Clyde Williams.
Good morning, sir. Thank you, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly here, just a quick question. Since the community redevelopment agency has projects where it provides contingent liability guarantees, are these projects that if there's a problem with the liability, the city is forced to pay for the legal costs incurred in this liability case? Or would they also cover the cost for the legal defense in a liability case? Because several times, we've had liability cases, or cases with the CRA, where the city is forced to cover the legal fees. So since they are providing liability guarantees, and if they're providing liability guarantees in a limited sense, why not liability guarantees in all their projects? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Williams?
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno. We just experienced one CRA project in El Sereno. Food for Less, contingency guarantees, financial guarantees. However, they didn't guarantee the neighborhood council. Nobody notified us until a very late date. And then the community came out against it. They didn't want it that way. What's going on? Doesn't CRA want to participate in the communities? I don't know. That's one of the problems. CRA seems to be the shadow government. Nobody worries about it because it has its own finances. Therefore, the money comes in, the money goes out. They didn't know how much money they had received from nine-zero-zero-three-two zip code, because, well, it wasn't broken out that way. They didn't know how much money they had provided to nine-zero-zero-three-two. So can't we get the CRA to come in to the communities and tell us what they're doing or plan to do, say on a five-year basis? Or maybe, like DWP, we need an inspector general and a ratepayer's advocate? I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll close the public comment on item number four and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item six called special for cards.
Okay. Dr. Williams and Mr. Sacks, if you'd like to come forward in office order this time.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno. Yesterday, in this very chamber, the Planning Commission approved the cornfields, or Royo Seiko Plan Project. The redevelopment agency is going to take over six hundred acres of mixed uses, that is industrial, municipal, and residential. However, they are also going to be taking over the transportation facilities through the area and such? I don't know. We have a problem. CRA can evict by eminent domain all of the small industries that have sprung up in this area. They can't do it for those who reside, but maybe they'll do it for the industrial. And oh, by the way, they changed the plan from two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine to allow an FAR of six, five, and four, rather than, like last year was two thousand and nine, only allowed a FAR of three. Some of us know what FAR is, that is floor area ratios, and this will have a considerable impact upon the movement of people from Lincoln Heights, El Sereno, into downtown. So industrial incentives need to be removed, the eminent domain provisions that allow small businesses, that is less than twenty people, to be evicted by eminent domain. Thank you.
Mr. Sacks is our next speaker.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. I would like to address as part of this motion, the CRA living wage job part. Now, this living wage job or part of this motion, is that the living wage that's comparable to the one at the airport? No. Because the airport is a second tier. So essentially, the city has a two-tier living wage ordinance. How fair is that? Now, with this two-tier living wage ordinance, the lower tier is twenty-five percent less than what the airport workers make, who are affected by the living wage ordinance. And they are not... Neither ordinance, if they have the living wage, guarantees them healthcare coverage.
If you could bring it back to the industrial incentive program, it's different than the living wage, sir.
It's...
It's an incentive package to bring industrial...
It says retaining living wage jobs. So I'm discussing the living wage ordinance, the living wage...
Okay.
I'm trying to compare the two. Could you hold my time, or would that be possible? I'm comparing the two, trying to find out why there's a two-tier living wage ordinance.
That's unfortunately not what's not before us today. I know it uses the word living wage, but we're not discussing living wage levels or two tiers of it.
I understand that it's not before you. People are aware of that.
All right, so if you'd like to make any more comments about the industrial incentive program, we'd be happy to hear those, but otherwise, we've strayed a little afar.
My time is running, by the way, also.
Okay, last chance to bring... Okay, last chance to bring it back.
Where am I going off if I'm talking about a living wage ordinance?
All right, thank you, sir. Your time is up, we appreciate it. I will close our general public comment on this. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item seven called Special for Cards.
Don't go far, Mr. Sacks. Your last card on number seven. This is the Slosson Wall Green Space.
I promise I won't discuss the living wage ordinance on this project. But my question regarding this, there's two things. As part of this motion, allow the funding sub-recipient to be changed from Figaro or Corde CLT to Figaro or Corde CLT and/or its wholly owned subsidiary, Slosson and Walpark LLC, and the Slosson Wall Green Space and Affordable Housing Project. Well, wouldn't the Green Space, wouldn't the Slosson Wall Green Space and Affordable Housing Project be a subsidiary of the Slosson and Walpark LLC? And you're changing it from a purchase of a seven-acre site to the park portion of the seven-acre site, which is in a file? Would that be designated in the file what the park portion would be? And if not, why not still purchase the whole seven-acre site as a park? And then you have the property in the city control. But again, I ask, you have a sub-recipient of one corporation with a subsidiary, and another pass-through down to another project. Does anybody see anything wrong with this? We have two pass-throughs for money? Don't we have problems with South Central Developments? Isn't there a problem with the Malton Courts development? That went on and on. I mean, isn't this a major reason why there are so many difficulties in getting some development in that portion of the city of LA? Because you have this endless number of pass-through organizations, each one taking a percentage of the fees, until finally, the project owes money. It's the same, same way of doing government. It's just incredible.
Then I'll close our comments on item number seven. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, that just leaves item one, which is being held on the desk for 12 members.
All right, I think Mr. Zino wasn't expected for another 25 minutes, so we'll take our first vote today on that. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
As an ordinance, that will carry over till next week, one week from today, for a second reading, which will require just a simple majority, since 12 members were not here for the first reading. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting an referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk.
All right, let's go for it.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused January 19th for city business. That meets council policy.
All right, he is excused.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused to arrive at 12:30 on December 14th for city business. That also meets council policy.
All right, he is excused.
And Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused November 12th for city business. That also meets council policy.
All right, Mr. Reyes is excused.
That clears the desk.
All right, any announcements, colleagues, for this weekend? Any announcements? Mr. Labange?
Spring forward, fall back. This is the time of the weekend when we not only change our clocks, but encourage everybody to change their smoke detectors. Have a little time with family to review safety measures in your home as we change from daylight savings time to Pacific Standard Time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know, Mr. Wesson, did you want to share with the public the 10 o'clock AM inauguration of a new post office tomorrow?
Tomorrow, 39th and Crenshaw, 10 a.m., we're going, well, not we, but Congresswoman Diane Watson is naming the post office after our great mayor, Tom Bradley.
Thank you.
And Mr. Parks and I, I believe, will be in attendance.
Mr. Labange will be there.
And Mr. Labange will be there as well.
I'll be coming too, and Ms. Perry, so it'll be a big party.
So everybody's welcome to be there tomorrow, 10 o'clock.
Thank you. We will also be celebrating tomorrow the Centennial of Selma Elementary School in Hollywood. We invite folks to come throughout the day. We'll be doing a number of events, but 1 o'clock, the Centennial Celebration at Selma Elementary School tomorrow. And we have an East Hollywood Neighborhood Walk kicking off from Lemon Grove Park tomorrow at 11 a.m. that we invite the members of the public to join us at as well. And don't forget, we kicked off last night the American Film Institute Film Festival in Hollywood. Some of the finest films made here and around the world are being shown in Hollywood at Grauman's Chinese, so we invite folks to take a look and to visit that great institution in Mr. Labange's district. Tom?
Thank you very much. The Autry National Center will host the American Indian Arts Marketplace 2010. This is a very big weekend, where many native people come to share in the cultural exchange at the Autry in Griffith Park. That's both Saturday and Sunday. In addition, on Sunday, it will mark the 30th anniversary of the passing of the late, great Steve McQueen. We will gather in Hollywood at the Historic Fire Museum with a parade of Mustangs, Cobras, and Porsches. Down Hollywood Boulevard, place flowers at his star in front of the El Capitan Theater, then proceed through the intersection of Highland and Santa Monica Boulevard to inaugurate Steve McQueen's Square. Now, that will take place. With due respect to all traffic laws, thank you, Councilmember Krikorian. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huizar.
Seventh, in northeast Los Angeles, on the corner of York and Eagle Rock Boulevard, we're having our fifth annual Veteran's Day Parade. Invite everyone to come out. Secondly, Saturday, on Honey and Drive at Chocolate Cafe, we are having an event to encourage people to shop locally in El Surino. We're going to have a kickoff for a new program to help people get discounts when they shop in El Surino. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Mr. President, for the public that's been following the Crenshaw-LAX Transit Quarter, two very important meetings tomorrow, Saturday, November the 6th. There'd be a discussion about the Florence La Brea Station from 10 a.m. to noon at Faithful Central Bible Church at 400 West Florence. And on Tuesday, November the 9th, there'll be a discussion about the Crenshaw-Slosson Station and the Park Mesa Heights alignment, 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. at Crenshaw High School, 5010 11th Avenue.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Del Ray Day. A lot of people don't know that Del Ray is 105 years old. It was there before Marina Del Ray was there. It's one of the sleeping parts of my lovely 11th district. Well, they have Del Ray Day this Sunday, November 7th, from 11 o'clock to 3 o'clock at the Glenn Allen Park, which is 4601 Ala Road in Del Ray. So come, have fun, mix with your neighbors, it'd be a great community event. I'll be there giving out some awards about 12, 12:30, to the great community leaders. Del Ray Day this Sunday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alarcon?
Yes, councilmembers, I just wanted to announce a rally in response to the Responsible Banking Initiative. On November 8th, at 6:45 at Blessed Sacrament Church in Los Angeles, the LA Voice and PICO Organizations are going to be holding a conference on this issue. And I'd like to invite everybody to that event, especially councilmembers. I know that Councilmember Huizar is going to attend, and I would encourage others to get information about why they think the Responsible Banking Ordinance is so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Do we have any adjourning motions today? If we can ask everybody to please rise for adjourning motions. Ask everybody in chambers to please rise. Thank you. I'll recognize Mr. Labange.
Members, I ask for adjourning in memory of George Sparky Anderson, a graduate of Dorsey High School here in Los Angeles. Rose, went to USC, but rose through the ranks to the Major League Baseball to be one of the greatest managers of all time. And in later years, I'd run into Sparky in the variety of paths that we all take, and he was always an inspirational leader. I ask for adjourning in memory of George Sparky Anderson. Additionally, I ask for adjourning in memory of Sarah Farrell, not related to John Farrell, but Sarah Farrell and her late husband Carl Farrell owned and operated the Dresden Movement in the Las Feliz District of Los Angeles. They were wonderful hosts, she is a beautiful woman, she's survived by her three sons. I ask for adjourning in memory of Sarah Farrell.
Thank you. I'd like to second that. If there's no other adjourning motions, do we have any others? Please call the roll. Will next be in session this coming Tuesday here in John Farrell Council Chambers at 10...